Hi, everyone. I'm State Representative Brian Farnin. I'm going to place everyone on mute but the speakers. At the end of the presentation, we're going to lead with the questions that were set in advance. If anyone has any additional questions, please send them. Try to limit to one per person so we can get as many of them answered within the hour because we do try to have a hard stop right at 1:00. So you've got Tony Wong, who's going to give an update on testing. Brian Farnin, I'm going to talk a little bit about the federal response. Kristin McCarthy-Wehhe is going to talk about the state response and reopening. And Laura Devlin is going to be talking about unemployment insurance and claims and things like that. And she's often the fixer in that regard. So with that, and we're also going to have, most importantly, Superintendent Mike Cummings, who is going to talk about e-distance learning, give an update there. And then we'll also talk a little bit about, you know, what we think might going to happen for the fall, where it's still very much to be determined. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tony and we'll go from there.
Thank you very much. And this is the world we live in in technology. Welcome, everyone. I just want to give you a quick update in regards to the current data released by the governor yesterday. The overall summary, COVID cases in the state of Connecticut statewide is 43,239. That's an increase from yesterday of 148. COVID-associated deaths stands at 4,007. And unfortunately, it isn't another increase of 18. And patients that are currently hospitalized is right now at 373. And that's, again, a decreasing line of minus 33. What's positive is the fact that we have an increase in testing that's being reported. Right now, we have done over 279,457. That's an increase on a, yesterday, of nearly 5,000 additional testing. And it's interesting, in Fairfield County, and I want to contrast versus someplace like Wyndham County. Fairfield County has over 15,840 cases. And literally, Wyndham has 397. And so when you're looking at that, these are contrasts. And that's one of the challenges we have in the reopening. Now, the latest news is that the governor has moved forward, the Phase 2 reopening. He has decided that instead of June 20th, he's moving it to the 17th, which is pending the numbers that we're looking at that I just shared with you, a moving target in some cases. One of the other data points that I wanted to share with you that's a real point of concern is our nursing homes and assisted living facilities. What's remarkable is this data has, is of June 3rd. And that we have, literally, from a volume and the drastic and devastating impact in our nursing homes, we have nearly 2,879 deaths that have occurred in our nursing homes versus the total number that we have in our state. That's nearly 72% of all the deaths in the state of Connecticut occurring in our nursing homes and assisted living facilities. Those are staggering and indeed troubling numbers. And the impact on our vulnerable senior population and their family members and loved ones is devastating. And that's the one thing that I think we have to do a much better job in assessing and defining and hopefully address. So again, these data points are important because it helps us in moving forward and addressing this pandemic as we look to balance reopening our state but preventing the possibility of a second wave of occurring. So again, Brian, thank you very much for coordinating these things. You know, medical data and points of reference are critical when we're evaluating this contagious disease. So thank you very much for having me, and I look forward to the engagement.
Thanks, Tony. And I'm going to turn my one and a half page, hopefully, of notes into a shorter period. So, and actually, I've got Mike Cummings on the line, so hold on one second, see if I can grab him. All right. So I just told Mike, I'll get him in shortly because I think he is probably the most important guest here. So federal funding. So I'm going to start off with where we are with federal funding with municipalities. So right now, there's several pools of federal funding. Yesterday, Governor Lamont released the reimbursement amounts funded through what's called the Federal Coronavirus Relief Fund. This is the catch-all for any pandemic-related cost. It's the largest single source of federal funding. It's about $1.4 billion, so a lot of money. And this funding can be used to even match the 25% requirement for FEMA grants. It's used for necessary pandemic expenditures, cancel plant, some plant budget items, and it can't cover costs that were already included in the budget. This is for like PPE, overtime staffing costs, law enforcement, emergency shelter, sanitizing, cleaning, things like that. And when you see the Fairfield Town budget was approved for 2021 this week, which came in at $317 million. It's basically with no tax increase. You know, I'm hoping that with these amounts of federal funding, we can keep it that way. And it will hopefully help us bridge that gap. Next, I want to provide this week, both chambers of Congress passed new legislation that relates to the Paycheck Protection Program. This is something we talked about in previous webinars. This basically allows a small business owner, a PPP borrower, they can choose to extend their eight-week period to 24 weeks. You can imagine trying to use the loan in an eight-week period. That could be pretty hard to do. Also, under the language, it's in the House bill, which is not included in the Senate bill, but they'll have to be reconciled. The payroll expenditure requirement has dropped to 60%. It was previously 75%, but it's now a cliff. So basically, if you don't use the payroll protection funding 60% for payroll, it will not be forgiven. And that's, most people want this loan because it is forgivable. I'm just going to move really quickly. So I just want to say, lastly, you know, the PPP program, it's still available. And with these additional changes to the program, I think it makes it even a much more viable program. So please, please consider, if you're a small business, and reach out to me if you have any questions regarding it. Lastly, one of the questions that people have been asking is, will there be another stimulus check? And what, where are we with like next steps with federal funding? So right now, you know, there's, hasn't been any concrete action. The Republican-controlled U.S. Senate, Senate Majority Leader Mitch McConnell, said that the next stimulus bill will probably be much smaller than the CARES Act. Remember, the CARES Act is that $2.2 trillion stimulus package that includes the Paycheck Protection Program, which I already discussed. And also, that's the bill that included the first stimulus checks that went out. Remember, it was $1,200 for each individual, 500 for each dependent. Obviously, there was income limitations on that, so if you didn't get it, you probably have too much income. The House did, the demically-controlled House did pass what is called the HEROES Act. This was an even more ambitious $3 trillion stimulus bill, which did include stimulus checks. I don't know if that's going to go anywhere. I think Senator Mitch McConnell said it was dead on arrival, but there was some support with it from the White House. So if, you know, if I could figure out DC, I'd be a lot richer person. But I don't know where this is going to go. The likely next step is the Senate will take up the next stimulus bill. It'll probably be drafted by Senate Republicans with the White House. It's going to have some Democratic input, which is obviously good. We want to make it more bipartisan as possible, just to get it, and that's going to need to get passed. That's just the reality of it also. So there's no indication whether there will be second stimulus checks coming, but I would never guess what Washington DC is going to do. But it will also, the next stimulus bill will likely include things like infrastructure and other kind of economic stimuli. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Laura, and then we'll have Kristin, and then we'll have Mike.
All right. Thanks, Brian. So I just want to talk a little bit about unemployment, just to start off. There are four different programs. There is the standard unemployment insurance, if you are employed by somebody else, and that is paid out by the state of Connecticut. For the first time ever, because of the CARES program, self-employed individuals can also be covered under the Pandemic Unemployment Assistance Program. There was also, on May 22nd, if any, if you are eligible, meaning that you have expired all of eligible state benefits or Fed benefits, DOL was issuing letters starting May 22nd that would enable those individuals to enroll in the Pandemic Extended Unemployment Compensation Program. And that is an extra 13 weeks of benefits. Regardless if an individual is under the state unemployment compensation because they're employed by somebody else or they're participating in the federally-funded Pandemic Unemployment Assistance Program, there is an additional umbrella program, which is the Federal Pandemic Unemployment Compensation Program. That's the extra $600 a week. So that's just kind of the landscape of programs. We did get an update from the Department of Labor yesterday. It does give some hope. No doubt, this has been one of the biggest challenging areas for state government. In DOL's defense, they have processed four years of traditional claims in a period of 11 weeks. And they are doing things, they've issued up $2.2 billion so far in combination of both state and federal funding. And they are also starting to focus. Other states have seen issues with fraud. It's something that we are concerned about here. But they are gearing up to also monitor fraud and ensure that there are no issues with our state. But they are also taking some steps to ensure things move smoother going forward. They have shifted employees and brought back retirees to manage claims, going from, I think, 20 to 80 employees. They have also brought in another 40 to address email, general email concerns. And they are also bringing in additional 60 employees in 20-person chunks that are kind of being trained in waves. And they will also start to be able to address claims. And in July, the DOL will implement a state-of-the-art contact center. So I think if anything, this pandemic has certainly brought to light some areas, opportunities for improvement. Those steps are being taken. If any of you or any of your neighbors, family members, or friends are having challenges with your unemployment claims or their unemployment claims, I do suggest that the DOL has done a good job on their FAQs and they continue to update those. But reach out to your representative, whether it is me, whether it is Brian, whether it is Kristin. Tony's got an umbrella of all of us in Fairfield. But we are happy to handle your claims if you are having, you know, you're just stuck having issues or you know people who are. That is part of our job, and we are more than happy to do that for you. So with that, I know we're short on time. I will end and turn it back to you, Brian.
Thank you so much, Laura. And we'll pass it over to Kristin, who's going to give an update on the state reopening. There was big, big news that, I don't want to spoil it. There was big news that came out just this morning. So that's the teaser for Kristin. You're up.
Well, Brian, guess what? I've actually been on Zoom calls all morning, so you'll have to share the big news that came out this morning. Because I actually was on a call this morning with the Advisory Committee, Intergovernmental Relations, talking with town managers, COG directors, which are representatives of government, and others about the steps that they have to take and that every municipality, including our own, has to take to try and figure out how to reopen our town halls. And I know we're going to hear more and talk more, hopefully, with Mr. Cummings about that. June 17th is the date, Senator Wong said in his update, that the governor has said, rather than the June 20th date, the next round will start on June 17th. We're going to have indoor dining available, it sounds like, gyms, movie theaters, libraries. And there's guidance being issued. The guidance is expected to come out early next week. I know a lot of people are eager to have that guidance sooner rather than later, but it sounds like that's when we're going to get that. Larger group gatherings, though, the governor has said that after July 6th, the high school graduations of 150 could occur. Other events that are a larger group, we're still waiting to hear, and there are still conversations happening about that. Lots of conversations happening about school reopening in the fall with Mr. Cummings on. I know we want to get to that, and I want to be brief. But just to tie into what Senator Wong said at the beginning, reopening hinges on those metrics that I've talked about on previous Zoom meetings that we've had. The declining hospitalization rate needing to continue, and testing. The, not just the capacity for testing, but the actual number of tests that are being done. And we saw just a slight dip in that. So we've got to make sure we continue to get the word out to let people know that they need to go get tested. I know Bridgeport's going to have some testing available at one of the schools this weekend. I did also just want to take a moment to acknowledge what has occurred in this, the past week plus in our country. And to just name the incredible pain, sadness, anger, frustration, fear that so many of our neighbors and friends, who are people of color in particular, are experiencing following the tragic death of George Floyd. I know that we are in a time crunch, and this is a conversation that we, as a community, will continue to have, and one that I'm dedicated to, both in terms of that personal work, but also what that means for us as a community, policy and practice and culture and all that. So I just did want to acknowledge that as we move forward in this conversation. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Kristin. And that's very well said, and thank you for adding that. That's a really important part. There was a really great candlelight vigil that occurred last night in Fairfield, and I was honored to be able to participate in that. So with that, Mike Cummings, I'm sure there's probably, people are very interested to hear you have to say. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Mike. And hopefully, he's here. Hopefully, I didn't lose him.
He is here, but I think he might be muted.
All right. There he is. Mike, can you hear us?
There I am. Yep. Thank you.
All right. Perfect. All right. Thank you so much, Mike.
All right. Well, I really appreciate the invitation, the opportunity to speak to everybody today. So I can, excuse me, I can give you a quick update, kind of where we are in Fairfield, and give you a sense, too, of what we're really on hold for as well. So we're, as I've stated in my emails out to the community, and we'll continue to work on, we're really operating off of three possibilities for what the fall will look like. One, of course, is a return to in-school learning with or without some restrictions in social distancing. And quite honestly, I think acknowledging the fact that September, we're like, we will bring those social distancing requirements. And then, of course, the possibility that we can be in distance learning again. Or quite honestly, I think a lot of what we see and hear in other places, and honestly, and we look to our guidance somewhat to what's happened to schools in Asia and to Europe, is some type of combination of the two where students might go on alternating days, every alternating two or three days, and then be in distance learning on those other days. So we're really working off of, you know, if you think about that, we have to work off of several levels of work. One is the simple logistics, or I shouldn't say simple because there's certainly not, but the logistics of returning people into school buildings. The ideas around what will social distancing require for transportation, for students' entry and exits of building, for lunch, for passing in the halls, what do classrooms look like? Just to give you some thought of what we're doing in Fairfield, a lot of our elementary schools over the past few years have converted standing, sit-alone desks to tables. Well, tables don't lend themselves to social distancing as well as standalone desks do. So we're in process of inventorying our, those old-style desks now and determining how we might have to distribute those. You know, what is the implications for bus rides? And also, with all this, obviously, is the implications for cost, staffing, all the other things that come with it. So that's one level of the work, this kind of logistics, the safe, the basic safety and welfare of both staff, students, and our community. And then the next level of work is the operational pieces around distance learning in whatever form it might come. So how do we take the work that we've done this year and make it better? How do we look at integrating the schedule better? How do we look at how we might organize classrooms differently in terms of their, in terms of their organization online? How might we assign work differently, those types of things? And then the layer, I wouldn't want to say above that, but the layer that really is, the deeper work around that is, well, what has to change in our curricular patterns? What has to change in our instructional methods? So these are all the things that we're working on right now, and we'll work on through the summer.
All right. Great. And one thing I want to add in, before we jump into kind of questions, the big news is now it's June 17th when restaurants indoor and gyms can be open, not the 20th. And I also just wanted to say to our superintendent and just compliment him publicly for what an amazing job he's done with the Distance Learning Program in Fairfield. I know other towns have looked to Fairfield for guidance, so thank you so, so much in that regard. And I think there's probably a consensus that we all want to get back to school full-time in the fall. It's a question of, you know, how do we, how do we get there? And how does, how do we make that happen? So, you know, that is, you know, something that we're all kind of keenly focused on. And the thing that I'm most concerned about is, you know, hopefully Hartford providing clear guidance, but also flexible guidance, because what's going to be good for Fairfield might not make sense for Norwich and may not make sense for Enzo and your Derby. So I kind of feel like you've got a tough, a tough job, Mike, because you have to, you haven't gotten kind of like the marching orders from the state yet, but yet you're doing a very good job of trying to figure out, you know, what, you know, okay, we think there's likely three paths. We'll be prepared to address those three paths. So with that, I'm going to move to some of the questions. And the first one I have here, I forgot, was regarding a desire to basically prioritize the in-class seating for educational students that came in. And has there been any thought on that? Or is that something that, you know, that the town is looking into right now? And this isn't my question. This is a question we received.
I don't know if I understood the question at the very beginning there.
I think when it comes to starting in the fall, there was a question of whether they would potentially prioritize the younger students who cannot be home alone, was the basic question.
Yeah, that's, that's something that you'll see that the European countries have done. And I think that that's something that the state is looking into. You know, obviously, and I heard it said before about non-educational matters, everything follows the guidance of the, of the data points that the governor's instituted and the public health is following. But, but I absolutely think that that's an option, you know. But just from a, from both a ease-of-use issue for parents, that the younger ones, the older ones can take better care of themselves at home, at least we all hope so. And then, but also the needs of primary students, you know, you think K-1, 2, and even into grade 3, those students really need far more support, not, not just in terms of technology learning or learning technol, with technology, but in the everyday encounters and interactions with teachers. So that's something that we have to, we have to consider and are strongly considering as a possibility.
And then another question that we received from you, Mike, related to, related to the fact that, what do you do if you have children of different age groups who would potentially have to go to school on a staggered day? Where you could see, if you had a child who was in third grade, if I'm understanding this question correctly, and you had a child who was in eighth grade, you could potentially have a scenario where you're going to have one child home at all times? And how does that impact people with jobs and things like that? And I, and I think-
Yeah. That, and, and, you know, I think one of the things we've thought about, and we have not yet began to mechanize, but is the idea of that we would have to align student families, really, by day. So if we go into some alternating day schedule, we're going to have to make sure that those students in one family are going on the same days. So there's not only a horizontal issue here, but clearly a very strong vertical one that we'd have to build into consideration.
Yep. That makes sense. Next question, I think this one might actually go to Tony Wong, which relates to, I hear that Governor Lamont is in the process of implementing a tracking program as a, as a result of COVID. How would we opt out of that? And I don't believe there is an opt-in, I don't think there is a program where you're automatically opt-in, but I'll defer to you, Tony, to respond to that one.
Well, I think everybody can offer their perspective, but that is one of the phases that we have to get into. And it's a critical aspect of how we can manage this pandemic. Ultimately, we need to have much more expansive testing. We need to be able to address the issue of, of tracking and addressing that, that we're not spreading this for a second wave. It really affects everything that we're trying to plan out. You know, we have a June 17th Phase 2, but nevertheless, that could change overnight with, with data points that we get every day. So in regards to tracking, in regards to trace-tracking, and the various other means that we have, it ultimately has to be a phase in where we've got to do a better job. It, it, it's, it's not perfect right now. We're working toward getting a more complete detail. We're waiting for the leadership from the governor's office, as well as the Department of Public Health, to give us guidance on this. It's a moving target, as I said. It's very encouraging as we travel around town. We see a stirring of activity, which is fantastic. But I would urge caution. I would urge respect of other people's spaces and social distancing. We still have much ahead of us, and it's a challenge. And Kristin brought up a very interesting point. It's important. I didn't get into in the beginning because we wanted to be respectful of the focus on Dr. Cummings' time, but it is important for us to speak out. The, the recent occurrences in Milwaukee and the remarkable display of protests, peaceful protest, may I add, in the state of Connecticut is, is a remarkable demonstration of the rights and privileges that we have in this country. There is much to do. And I stand with many of the individuals, not just Dr. Cummings, but many of the individuals whose lives have been impacted to race, to ignorance, to bias, and to hate. Ultimately, we in Connecticut have to do a better job, as this country does. But I'm encouraged, and I'll just take a moment to share with the audience that in the state of Connecticut, we have done a far better job than the rest of the country. We have a public act that was passed just last year, a Public Act 19-90, in which we have required the police to release body camera video within 96 hours of any incident upon request. This is such an unprecedented transparency that doesn't exist in other parts of this country. The other part is it prohibits police use of violence and reporting and accountability. It, it really is something that I'm very proud to be part of. The other part is the fact that we in the state of Connecticut need to do a better job in widespread use of body cameras and community policing. So as we address, hopefully, in another forum on this issue, there's much more that needs to be done. But I stand with the people that are addressing their rights and to voice their concerns. What happened in Milwaukee was a travesty, and it was absolutely unacceptable in any terms. And we do need to speak out against that. But we need to recognize, we need to work towards solutions. So I didn't want to say that in the beginning, but I felt it was absolutely important to acknowledge that in light of the pandemic and the challenges there, the remarkable outpouring of people's voices is remarkable. And it is a demonstration of our democracy, and it shows that we still have much to do. And I stand with the people that are making their voices be heard.
And anybody missed the vigil last night at First Church? I mean, it really was a beautiful two-hour program. And they call it Two Houses, One Home, because First Church Congregational, along with First Baptist Church of Stratford, have kind of come together. So tonight, there is sort of a repeat vigil, if you will, at the second home, second house. And that is in Stratford at the First Church, First Baptist Church. Please feel free to certainly go. You'll, I think, find it very moving.
So I just want to go back to contact tracing for a second. Contact tracing, the program is up and running in pilot programs in a number of municipalities. It's the local health departments that are guiding that. Whether or not it is a voluntary program, when you are, I'm going to encourage people to participate. Because if you are identified as a COVID positive, if you are test positive for COVID, and you're able to cooperate and work with the health department in doing that, we're going to be able to break the chain a lot better. What's happening now is the state is recruiting volunteers to participate in that right now. Actually, they have, they're saying that they have the numbers that they need. There's also a platform, a Microsoft platform that's being used, but it's not a tracking act the way that it is being used in other states. What it is, is more a way for health departments to be able to share information across health departments, because we know the virus has no borders. So that program, as the senator said, is still in the ramp-up phase. Because as the curve goes down and the number of cases go down, we're better able to get back to that contact tracing. We got to the point where community spread was too much. But now the goal is to get all of that system in place so that come this fall, we're not dealing with forest fires. We're dealing, hopefully, with ring fencing, more campfires.
Yeah. Well said. And I do want to make sure we- And, um, I do wanna make sure we continue on with the questions so we can get as many of them in as possible. Um, the next question is, is what is the current recommendation for testing school staff in the fall? I don't know if people saw this. There was a press release put out by the Public Teachers Union, maybe it was one or two days ago, talking about that forty percent of, uh, teachers are potentially in a higher-risk category. So I can see why this would, uh, be a question where there is some concern. So I think this one goes to you, Mike.
Yes, um, that's something where we're waiting on some guidance. I, I, if there is some, I haven't seen it, and I apologize. I think that, um, there's also quite honestly, we're getting a number of questions from families, or parents around their concerns with sending students in who themselves might be medically fragile or other members of the family are medically fragile. And there's gonna be some, we're gonna need some guidance from the state around that, because, well, I hate to say it, there are these, there are existing attendance laws on the books that, that can be modified now through distance learning and other approaches, but, um, we're, we're gonna need some, some support on that. But certainly as a, as a school system, as a, well, as quite honestly, as people in the school system, we wanna be taking those things into account. And one of the things that we will do is we will, um, more formally, we're doing it informally now, but more formally, measure out both staff and students, who is and is not able to come into school. And we might, um, well, we probably are gonna look at how to then balance those two populations so that they can be supportive of each other.
And the next, uh, question we got in advance also for you, Mike, was, what is the biggest hurdle to a full-time start in the fall?
Um, by full-time, I'm gonna define that as, uh, and maybe I'm wrong here, but my.
I think they probably meant in per, I'm assuming they meant in person.
Okay, the, the, the biggest thing would be to work out, quite honestly, the logistics. Um, you know, uh, and, and as I said before, and I, I don't, I hate always kinda bringing these things up because the kids really, the kids always come first, the staff comes first. But I'm trying, trying to think of, be honest about folks, uh, how much these types of things are gonna cost. And it's not just cost issues, it's supply issues. So if you, if you play out the fact that obviously we're not working in isolation in Fairfield as a district, um, if, if there's increased requirements on transportation, let's just play with transportation now, um, that are gonna require, right now, the current guidance is, for summer schools, is, uh, essentially twelve students plus a bus monitor, um, on every bus, buses that are really designed to hold far more kids. So, you know, if you play that out, um, and both buses say could hold five times as many kids when they're full, when they're truly full, right, before March thirteenth. Um, you'd need five times as many buses as you have now. And I'm doing really, uh, certainly back-of-the-envelope math here, but, um, neither affordability would be an issue, but nobody has those buses. So.
Yeah, this is, this is a national problem. So I gotta think, you know, outside of Connecticut, you've got other states who are also looking for increased busing, uh, you know, opportunities.
Yes, we work, we don't, we certainly don't work in isolation. So there's gonna have to be some, um, you know, I think these are things that's gonna be, have to work out. They're not impossible, but those are the types of things that will limit, in a sense, how many students per day may be able to attend. Um, you know, and those are just the other factors we're gonna have to, to, to play in, um, as we, as we work out these scenarios.
Okay, um, another question we had was regarding, um, uh, at-risk students who have not been, uh, checking in. Um, will there be any additional measures taken for the fall if we had to go to a part-time, uh, or, or an off camp, off, off-campus, uh, program?
Um, yes, one of our, you know, we're, we're concerned about every, every student. Um, but there's, there's a group of students that, before this began, were academically at risk or socially and emotionally at risk. And those are the kids that we, um, and that group quite honestly has grown during the course of distance learning. Um, we have more concerns just because of the nature of what the families and kids have had to go through. So, um, there's, there will be a concerted effort to, um, you know, go back to the question, for example, about the primary grade students. I think there's a corresponding group of population that, of older students from grades, let's say from grade three up, that we're gonna have to think about it, perhaps as some priority way of, um, addressing services. And one of the things we're looking at, you know, we're looking at the possibilities of, uh, extended-day type programs, we're looking at the possibilities of Saturday academies, because it's, it's not just the, it, while we're concerned obviously about the academics, the priority has to be their wellness and how we as a, as a school system and as a community can support those kids. So, um, we're, we're, this, the situations we look at, the scenarios we look at, um, will need to be differentiated for the needs, the differentiated needs of students.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. And this question, maybe, um, maybe for you, Mike, but if you don't have an answer, because I don't, there's no, technical schools are really kind of outside of, probably out of your purview. But the question is, is there anything that could be done to help students at a technical, at a state technical school get caught up? Regular academics can be taught remotely, but students this year have not been able to participate in shop classes for hands-on learning. This problem will be even more acute if in-person schooling is impacted for the fall.
Yeah, that, that doesn't pertain to us so directly, but we do have classes like that. And, you know, we run tech ed and family consumer science class. Uh, you know, our, our music classes, to some degree, are impacted by these types of things. Um, and in some ways, it's a similar issue, although different in other ways, at, at, at every level. Um, I'm, uh, you know, we've tried to substitute some of the in-class, uh, instruction with, uh, virtual means of instruction, but, uh, you know, and, and we will continue to do that. But I don't think that any of us, just like with being in a social studies or a math class, it, it does not yet become a substitute for the real thing. And that, I, I don't know, that's a, that's a great question for the tech schools. And I'd be very interested to hear, are they gonna solve that? Because that is a major issue.
All right, um, excellent. Now, and I do apologize to everyone for the technical, uh, issues we had. I know I got bumped off from this. We had a fifteen-minute, uh, late start as we went, uh, that was a Zoom technical issue outside of our control. Um, I no longer have access to the Zoom group chat, um, when I got bumped off. Oh, but here comes one in right now. So at least the questions are coming in again now. So if you previously sent in questions, please feel free to, uh, resend those. Uh, the next one is, many high school electives are impacted in this respect, cooking. So, okay, yep, there's, um, so if anyone has any additional questions or if you submitted questions, we've got a few more minutes where I just ask that you maybe resubmit those and we'll answer those quickly, because they did seem to get, uh, wiped, uh, when, uh, and this is, I guess, the, the wonderful new world of, uh, Zoom and webinar and go-to meetings that we face, and these are things that have to happen, or do happen.
Yeah, Brian, I just, I just realized that, uh, I might have said, uh, Milwaukee, it was Minneapolis, uh, Minnesota, and, uh, but nevertheless, the, the challenges we talked about exist in every city and every town. So I wanted to be able to clarify that, uh, obviously, um, the sad situation occurred in Minneapolis, Minnesota. Um, and unfortunately, it happens in too many of our towns. And, uh, I apologize for that, uh, mistake earlier.
Yeah, and then, um, thanks. And then, um, well, well said. And then another question we have here is, um, will you be taking, uh, this to Mike, uh, will you be taking additional input on scheduling from parents?
I think, I think we will, uh, you know, I, I feel bound to do that, absolutely. I think one of the things though, that we're trying to be cautious about, and I, you know, I, I realize that in my communications, I can really come off as, you know, the most depressing Diane in the world, because I tend to think, I tend to worry about these things perhaps more than others do. But, um, one of the things that we wanna be cautious about as we, as we ask parents for input is being realistic in what those parameters would be. And so, um, we are supposed to, by the end of this month, get some guidance from the state around, um, what September may look like. Um, I would say to you that I don't think it'll look very different than the summer school guidance, which is just recently finalized and is available online. And, and that's, that's a sobering document, um, because it, again, just going back to the buses, for example, it talks about the precautions that, that schools will need to put into place. So, um, I wanna, I wanna have honest dialogue with people always, and I think that's predicated on the idea that the things that we talk about can truly be implemented. I don't want, you know, to waste anybody's time on, on conversations about what could be if, if those things are not realistic yet. And, and this will be an evolutionary piece. We know that, that, you know, just as the state is going through these kind of phases, no doubt the schools will go through those phases too. So, um, but going back, you know, to another question, um, the question, for example, of families, you know, in multiple grades and multiple levels, that's certainly a piece that if that becomes, uh, one of the parameters we have to work with, we're gonna have to work with families to make that work for them. So we will be continuing its dialogue throughout the summer, um, with folks. As, as soon as we have information, I'm committed to getting that back out to everybody.
And the next question is, and I have to use this one next, because it was my, one of my child's, it was my child's favorite teacher, so I'm being biased here by skipping them to the front of the line.
You're entitled.
If we end up using some sort of combination with alternating schedules for students, would teachers be teaching every day? And would they be expected to be teaching in person and virtually at the same time? And just to clarify, would teachers be in the building every day? There's a few kind of questions there, but I'll, I'll defer to you, Mike, on how to respond.
Um, that I, that I'm not sure about yet, because one of the things that we have to consider for the guidance is, um, is, you know, how, not just obviously the kids in the classrooms, but the number of staff. And while staff are separated by rooms, we do have other staff that go into those classrooms. We have staff that meet in staff rooms, you know? There's, there's these other things that happen during the course of the day. You've just got basically entry and exit issues. So, um, one of the possib, one of the things I avoid as an educator, and I'll just say this as an educator in any, in any setting, is I would try to avoid students having different teachers during the course of a week, right? So the idea might have to become something like the teacher follows the student both when they're virtually in or outside of the classroom. But again, uh, these are issues we're gonna, I'm not sure quite yet how we're gonna face, because we, um, we really predicated on the inventory of kids and then, um, and staff, and then what happens, um, you know, with these guidelines. So it's, it's one of the bigger questions. You, it raises the question, really one of the most important issues that we had to face, which is whatever we do has to be as rooted as possible in best educational practice. And some of these guidelines, by their nature, in terms of promoting wealth, uh, health, excuse me, not wealth, health are not necessarily rooted in educational practice, best educational practice. But that's, that is the priority now. So that's work we have to try to, um, reduce the conflict as we go forward.
Um, the next question we have here is how close to the beginning of the school year until you make the decision? In other words, what would be the lead time for you to say, this is what the first day of school looks like? And being the moderator, I'll just, I'll use my discretion to say, I, I think to some extent, you're still a little bit at the whim of the state with providing some guidance, right? But I'll defer to you.
Yeah, I think that's very true. Uh, you know, you think about how quickly we went out. Um, so I think that that's very true. I think that the, if we're, if the state, like most of the states, right, are putting, um, are following these indicators, the data dashboard, as it were, of, of public health, then, um, we, we've seen how quickly those numbers can rise and then, and then more slowly fall. So we're, we'll have to adapt to whatever happens. And that's why I said we really have to plan on all, um, and I'm defining this broadly, but on all three fronts for the possibility. So, um, but at some point, I, you know, that, you know, we've gotta commit. We've, we've gotta commit, because there's a lot of other clearly logistics that need to go into play. And we're gonna have to have multiple bus schedules, for example, and then publish them out. I just foresee a lot of this having to be, these options available, ready to go.
So Brian, on that one?
Sure.
It, it ties into the next one. I just wanna share what I heard from the UConn president, uh, on a webinar a couple of weeks back, which was essentially what you said, Mr. Cummings, is we're gonna have to be looking at those data dashboards and see what the numbers are. And the way the UConn president was talking about it was like you have kind of creating these three different planes and being ready to fly whichever one, and that it's possible to plan and have to, you know, two weeks before school, make a different decision. I know that's not welcome news, but I'm just sharing with you what the president of our flagship university has shared. In other words, the data will drive the decisions.
That's right, that's right.
And then, um, another question, I think, for you, Mike, and maybe to be determined, but how will schools provide temperature screening for teacher slash student? How will the self-isolation of students and teachers, in the case of positive COVID cases, impact on a person model when it's supposed to be two weeks long? I don't know, so the second question, but the second part, but the first part, I think, a little straightforward.
Yeah, uh, and I could, I think I could even approach the second one, because that's one of the ones, you know, these things that keep you up at night. So, um, the, the issue, the first issue is, we, we were looking at, you know, are we gonna have to hire additional staff in the morning? Um, you know, this goes back to this whole entry thing, just anyway, of not crowding doorways. But one of the things that we were looking at is, we, there are some places where students have to, uh, have their temperature checked at home first, and then they're not supposed to get on the bus, and then they do a supplemental check when the student actually arrives in school. Um, so, so those, those are things that we're gonna have to work with the community on. I think the second question is, you know, if a student presents suddenly ill in school or because of the contact tracing, um, you know, now is self-isolation for fourteen days or staff members in fourteen days, how do we, how do we, um, follow up with, let's take the teacher level, uh, having substitutes ready, um, to take over a classroom for a couple of weeks? And then how do we provide instructional support for those students while they're home? Because, you know, hopefully they're not ill, but rightfully they're, they're isolated. So we don't want students not to be learning for two weeks. Um, so there's a, another facet to distance learning there that we've not talked about, but they, that we have to be ready for, you know, this kind of in-and-out approach, almost like homebound instruction when a student has to be out of school for several weeks because of a medical issue. So, uh, again, just another, another factor to play out.
Dr. Cummings, uh, if, if I may ask a question, if, if we aren't able to go back into the fall, one of the challenges we've learned through the virtual learning of this past month is where are we making accommodations? What thoughts have you given to the IDD population, the special education needs? Uh, the difficulty of virtual learning and the unique component of it? Has the Board of Education given any additional consideration that should we continue this? What are some of the protocols and methodologies that you're considering for special education in the IDD population?
Um, yes, great question. And I will tell you that, that is, you know, we're looking right now, we hope to have an answer next week about what our extended school year program will look like. We had already hoped to expand just that capacity of that for the number of students. And we would, uh, hope to continue to do that. But, um, you know, we're just not sure if we're gonna be, be able to bring that in person or to do some of it in person, uh, this summer. Um, we are budgeting and we're working towards, um, using some of the, the, with the, with the, working with the town on this, um, using some of the savings from this year that we've had, because we've been closed, and holding on to that to use for extending, uh, school services for those students, uh, into the fall. So again, going back to the idea of extended day, um, Saturday academies, those types of things, uh, additional instruction, I, I, you know, it could take a, uh, variety of forms um, in order to support those students and their families.
Now, I know, um, uh, I know, Kristen, you had a hard stop at one, and I do apologize to everyone for the late start. And I think, Laura, I don't know if you have another meeting too, so maybe we can end on, uh, this one last question. Um, have we, have we considered asking parents to drive their kids to school? If they can't, no big deal, a bus will be fired. But I think some parents would happily drive their kids to school if it means they actually go to school. And I do believe that there is some state law being involved here with state mandates, uh, requiring certain levels of busing that we as a legislature may need to revisit. I mean, obviously, anyone who needs transportation to school needs to have that provided for. I think there's a social equity piece there. But I think a lot of parents would be flexible, uh, there may be ways to, uh, direct. Nobody wants to see the busing situation, in my opinion, be the bottleneck which keeps kids from going to school. So, but, um, I, I don't know if that's come up about, you know, you know, because right now, I think there's pretty much, everyone's entitled to a bus seat, but there may be a lot of people who would opt out of that if they felt that would help get their kids into brick-and-mortar school. Uh, I'll pass over to you, Mike, sorry for adding the commentary.
No, no, I, I, we agree. And I think that's one of the things that, that we are, we would definitely ask parents. I think that we've got, I mean, I think, first of all, as you, as you said, I think they're very practical. A lot of parents are gonna make that option, that choice anyway. So we might as well find out, uh, right now, what, how that could work in order to support that and reduce the number of buses required.
All right, perfect. All right, well, I know, um, we're gonna lose some people right now. So I do wanna thank everyone, I do apologize for the technical issues. I see a couple of follow-up questions that were not answered, um, because we, uh, we will, we can, we'll try to reach out to you and see if we can grab those and, uh, get those answered for you. And hopefully we'll have more information, uh, in the next couple of weeks. And Mike, thank you so much for joining, you've done an amazing job. Uh, and thank you obviously to our state senator and our state representatives for joining the meeting. And, uh, everyone, please stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thanks, Brian.
Be safe.